Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Candidates Forum. I'm Leo Eaton, Vice Chair of the Community Media Center Board of Directors. Over the years, the Community Media Center has produced numerous election forums for the League of Women Voters. However, several months after the primary election, we were informed that the Carroll County League of Women Voters was no longer active. As a public media center, we feel it's our responsibility to continue to provide the residents of Carroll County with the opportunity to learn as much as possible about the candidates running for local office. The Community Media Center is not affiliated with any political party, group, or organization. To ensure that all positions and points of view were equally represented, we invited all candidates to participate in this forum and to submit questions they would like to have included. Three of the local candidates have chosen not to participate in this public forum, although they've jointly presented a statement which will be read later in the forum. Now, in my view, this is regrettable, since the education of our children is of such critical importance to all of the residents of Carroll County. The decision of these three candidates not to grace us with their presence tonight is one less opportunity for voters to learn about all of the candidates, to ask questions, and to be engaged in an electoral process which will impact the future direction of the Board of Education. Rather than taking time away from this forum, we will be addressing some of the items in their statement online. We've partnered with the Carroll County Times, WTTR 1470 AM, and the Hometown Observer to publicize this event, and we're pleased to make this forum available live, on air, and online. Tonight's forum is being held at the Carroll Community College. The program is being streamed live on Channel 19 and on the Community Media Center's website at carrollmediacenter.org, and it will be rebroadcast on WTTR 1470 AM. Our moderator for this evening is Mr. Bill Butts, Chair of the Mount Airy Planning and Zoning Commission, and I will turn the program over to him for the rules of tonight's forum.
All of the Board of Education candidates were invited to participate in this forum, and each candidate was invited to submit questions on the issues they felt were most important. Tonight's questions will be selected from those that were submitted in advance by the candidates themselves, as well as questions that were received online and also from members of our audience tonight. If we receive multiple questions on the same topic from the audience, I will summarize the issue and ask one question to cover all of them. To the extent possible, I'll try to coordinate the questions that have come in from all the various sources. To begin, I will introduce the candidates. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for an opening statement, and following the introductions, I will ask the first question. Each candidate will then have a minute and a half to answer that question, and all candidates will answer the identical question. Once all the candidates have answered the question, and we step through all of the questions that we have this evening, we'll allow one minute for rebuttal by any candidate. Actually, we'll do that by question, followed up by the moderator. At the conclusion of the question period, each candidate will then have a minute and a half for a summary statement. All responses will be timed. Timekeepers will use cue cards. They're seated right here in the front row, so they're very visible to us. They'll also use a bell to signal the remaining time. The timekeeper will ring a bell two or three seconds after the final stop signal is given, and the moderator will immediately interrupt the candidate and discontinue the statement or answer at that time, and the microphone will be silenced. Tonight's forum is being recorded, so we ask that everyone, if you've not already done so, please turn their cellphones off, and that attendees refrain from applause or making noise during the forum or doing anything visible or audible to express support or opposition to any candidate during the forum. As you heard, three of the candidates have declined to participate in tonight's evening. They're George Harmoning, Jim Ronek, and Charles Bud Nason. Each of these candidates was offered the opportunity to submit a written statement to be read at the forum, but none of the candidates responded to the request. Instead, three have chosen to be with us this evening, and they are, from my right, immediate right, Devon Rothschild, Virginia Harrison, and Bob Lord. I'm going to ask each of them in turn to introduce themselves to you.
I want to thank each of you for being here tonight, and I would like to thank all of our sponsors. This year's Board of Ed race is extremely important. We need to elect members like me, who will put the goal of improving student success above all else, who will seek out community input, who will ask tough questions of those in leadership positions, who will provide solutions to current problems, and who have a true understanding of how the school system works. With one child in the public schools and two who will start next year, I am directly involved as a classroom volunteer, PTA member, substitute teacher, and member of the Community Advisory Council. I have also toured many of our schools. While we do need to address the issues surrounding the implementation of Common Core, that is one of only many of many issues affecting our school system. Last year, we lost over 100 teachers, and 60% of those left to higher-paying school systems. We must provide competitive salaries for our educators so we have the highest quality teacher standing in front of our students. We also need to address the needs of our special education and gifted student populations, improve communication system-wide, and increase access to career and technology programs. Working in conjunction with our commissioners, we must develop a long-term plan for funding education that prioritizes our resource needs based on improving student achievement. I ask for your vote, Devon Rothschild, in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Virginia?
Hi, my name is Virginia Harrison, and I'm a candidate for the Carroll County Public School Board. I've lived in Sykesville for 37 years, and I am a mother of two adult children. I've former employment with the Federal Bureau Investigation, and I've run a home-based business called Dressing by Virginia for the last 36 years. I have leadership roles in our communities such as the Carroll County Human Relations Commission, the Department of Social Service, United Way of Community Partnership, Carroll Community College Educational Foundation, the Local Management Board, and currently I am the President of the Carroll County Public School Board of Education. My commitment is to support every effort to raise employee salary to an acceptable level. Our teacher's salary are not competitive and significantly lower than our surrounding county. If we are to maintain our educational standard and achieve our goal with highly qualified teachers, we must increase our teacher's salary. And especially to maintain our highly qualified teachers, we must, it's crucial that we maintain their salary because we are losing our teachers. I believe that continued strength in communication will help foster better relationships with all partners across the county.
All right. Thanks, Virginia. Bob?
Good evening. My name is Bob Lord. My wife Cindy and I live in Gamber, where I'm a stay-at-home dad and a small business owner. I'm the parent of three public school children, one has graduated and two are still enrolled. And because I have a stake in the outcome of our education system, I'm a candidate for the Board of Education. As a parent of two children who attend Carroll County public schools, I realize firsthand the value of parental and community involvement. I believe that a successful education system needs open dialogue between families, community, and educators. That's why I'm active in Carroll County public schools in just about every way a parent can be: volunteering in my children's classroom, working as PTA political liaison, and serving as parent guide to help parents navigate the school system and make sure their questions get answered. I'm also active on the Community Advisory Council and the founder of Carroll Values Education, a parent advocacy group promoting quality education in Carroll County. Our schools are critical to the quality of life in Carroll County, and we must work together to maintain and improve one of our strongest assets. We must support teachers with regular step increases, raises, and effective professional development. We must foster and encourage partnership through open communication to all stakeholders. We must continue to focus on the three factors that make our school system such an asset to our county: great families who are interested and active in our children's education, great educators who continue to do their best no matter what. Thank you.
Very good. As we said earlier, there are three candidates who have declined to be present this evening: George Harmoning, Jim Ronek, and Charles Bud Nason. In a moment, I'm going to read a joint statement that they have submitted. The candidates up here on the stage have not heard it either. I'm going to ask for their reaction after I've shared it with you. Here is the statement that came in this afternoon. "When we approached the Media Center several months ago to ask about hosting a debate among all six Board of Ed candidates, we were told, 'Since the League of Women Voters disbanded, CMC won't partner with a partisan group for a debate or forum.' Yet, here you are tonight. When we learned that there would be an event after all, we asked repeatedly that the format be a debate, not a forum where candidates have a mere minute or so to give little more than soundbites. Yet, here you are. We think that the public deserves and needs in-depth discussion of issues involving their children's education. That won't happen under this format this evening, and it underserves the voting public.'" There may be two letters from the Attorney General's Office presented to you this evening. They claim that, one, you as parents do not have the right to decide how your child is educated, and, two, if we try to opt out of Common Core, there will be fines and sanctions. Three of us remain determined that parents, not the Governor's Office, retain that right. This is the same Attorney General who said Carroll must implement a mandatory rain tax, even threatened to fine us thousands of dollars a day. But understand, just as our commissioners said no to the mandatory rain tax, we still say no to the mandated Common Core standards and testing. Just as the rain tax is no longer mandatory in Carroll, we expect Common Core will no longer be mandatory either. It's disappointing that some would go to such lengths to convince the voters to give up and give in on something so important. We remain focused on making Carroll County a Common Core-free sanctuary. We knew this wasn't going to be easy, but our children and grandchildren will remain more important than Common Core. Common Core hurts children; why are some so determined to force it on them? Despite what you may hear or read, we have no teacher hostilities. We actually support both them and quality public education, and have all along. Visit our website, www.fedupwithcommencore.com, for in-depth information. It provides a wealth of information about Common Core, about our qualifications, positions, options, and solutions. We, your education team, ask for your vote on November 4. For George Harmoning and Jim Ronek, I thank you respectfully, Bud Nason." I'm going to start with Virginia this time. Briefly, if you will, give a response and a reaction.
I truly believe that the three candidates that are not here today really don't understand what Common Core is and what it's about. There's been a lot of false statements put out about cameras that the school system has taken of the kids, the movements that they're taking in chairs, and it's not true. It is simply not true. And I feel, to me, I was very excited when I found out we were doing Common Core, and I think it's a good program because it teaches you to think critically, and I think what they, they're looking at, they believe that we've been given money that we have not been given, and they really just don't understand what it is and what it can do for our kids because if we don't fully implement Common Core correctly, we're going to fail our kids because they will not be able to compete in our global society that we have now.
All right. Bob, how about your reaction?
My reaction, I'm extremely disappointed that the other three candidates did not attend. This is truly about open communication, and by them not attending and not being here to address the public really speaks volume about their character. On the other hand, I really do not want to be drawn into the politics of Common Core. There again, I believe it is simply framework, that our curriculum is developed locally, and the political rhetoric, you know, really does quite a bit of harm to repeat it over and over again, and to really get engaged in the political rhetoric. I do not want to be drawn into that. You know, I just don't. Thank you.
All right. Devon?
I believe that, so they're not here because they believe that the public needs in-depth discussion. I feel like the way that the public gets that in-depth discussion is by meeting with us, and I've been out in the community as much as possible, meeting with voters so that they have that opportunity, and I agree, it does a disservice to the voters by them not being here. The Attorney General letter that came out doesn't tell us any more information. We all know that the Common Core state standards are law, and the Attorney General letter that came out said just that. So what I believe about the Common Core is that we have some serious problems, we need to address them, but my focus has always been on addressing the needs of our students now. So where I see problems, I think our teachers need more professional development opportunities. I think there's been a lack of communication with our parents, and parents feel like they don't understand what's happening, especially at the elementary level when it comes to math. But these are things that we can address here in Carroll County, and we have been addressing them. More schools are holding math curriculum nights so that the parents can understand these changes. I have suggested that on homework assignments, parents, our teachers can put three sentences explaining what's happening. These are the changes that are going to help our kids succeed now, and we can certainly work with our legislators to slow down Common Core and to get rid of the aspects that are not working. For example, I do have some concerns about the park assessment and the amount of time it's going to take away from instruction. I don't like tying teacher evaluations to student growth.
Devon?
Yes.
Let's go ahead.
Okay. I'm sure we're going to talk about Common Core some more, so, thank you.
We will. All right. Thanks to all of you for those reactions. We're going to move on to the submitted questions at this point. Again, I will read a question, and then each candidate will have up to a minute and a half to provide their response, followed by a one-minute rebuttal, if any choose to, and then we'll move to the next question and so forth as we proceed through all of them. First question, and Bob will start with you. Why are you interested in serving on the school board, and what do you perceive to be the responsibilities of a school board member?
Good question. Running for the Board of Education is really the next logical step, and all the work that I've been doing in Carroll County, you know, being extremely active in our school system and in our communities, it's really just the next step. You know, our, my views on what the roles of the Board of Education is, we are there to set policy, to review, to approve the budget, to listen to the community, we establish school boundaries, I mean, there's various things, and we hire and give direction to our superintendent. Thank you.
All right. All right, Devon, same question. Why are you interested in serving on the school board, and what do you perceive to be the responsibilities of a board member?
The short answer is that I want to continue to advocate for our students and for the best interests of our staff, families, and community. I think the main role of the Board of Education is to continually improve student achievement, and I also think they are responsible for collecting and asking for community input. They serve as the vessel for democratic input from the community into our public education system. Thank you.
Virginia, do I need to repeat the question?
I'm on the Board of Education because it was such, like, a natural progression for me. I started working with the school system a number of years ago. I was asked to be, serve on the Multicultural Conference to help write the first five years of multicultural education, the first five years of multicultural education, and then we worked on the second five years of the multicultural education, and out of that came the Educational, Multicultural Educational Council, and I worked, I was on the Ethical, Ethic Panel of Carroll County Public School, I was on the Educational Foundation of the Carroll County Public School, I was instrumental in helping start the Multicultural Leadership Conference that now the public school has picked up, and it's been going on for like 15 years, been about 15 years now, and it was sort of a natural progression for me to be on the school board. And one thing about school, being on the school board, is that we're there just to make sure that the superintendent is doing his job. That's our purpose. Thank you.
Very good. Would anyone like some rebuttal time?
No.
Okay. All right, next question. Please describe your direct involvement with the Carroll County Public Schools, especially in the last two years, and Devon will start with you.
This is my favorite question because this is why we're all here. I have a second grader at Linton Springs Elementary, so I volunteer regularly in the classroom and have for the past several years. I'm an active PTA member. I've organized the Science Fair at our school for the past several years, as well as the Earth Day celebration. I've written grants for the environmental program at our elementary school. I'm a substitute teacher. I substitute at the outdoor school, which has been one of the most incredible experiences of my life, and I serve on the Community Advisory Council. I've also attended almost every Board of Education meeting since my son has started in our school system. I attend commissioner meetings, and I have toured over 20 of our schools since filing as a candidate, and that, to me, is the most rewarding part, going into all these different schools and seeing the different personalities, the way the administrators are running, and just watching the kids who are learning and excelling. Thank you.
Okay. Again, the question, and Virginia, it'll be your turn. Please describe your direct involvement with the Carroll County Public Schools, especially in the last two years.
My goal is to visit every school in Carroll County in the last four years. I haven't quite done that, but I have visited every high school, every middle school, and I'm working on the elementary schools. I feel like if you're on the Board of Education, you need to know what's going on in the schools. I even went on the snow run just to see what it takes to close the school when the weather is bad. I did not realize that you had to go to every part of the county to check the roads out, and Hampstead weather is not the same as the weather in Sykesville, and the roads are different, and it was phenomenal to, phenomenal to see what it takes to really close the school system. And you have to talk to other counties because we have approximately seven buses that leave Carroll County every day going to different counties, and the relationship that we have with other counties, and how important it is that we work together. Thank you.
All right. Bob, your turn. Please describe your direct involvement with the Carroll County Public Schools, especially in the last two years.
As a parent, I think the best thing you can do for your children is get involved in education, and as I've said before, the various things that I do, but I'll repeat them again. I volunteer extensively in my children's schools, and I intend to do so always. I am a parent with the political liaison on our PTA, and what I do is I inform them about the issues that are happening in the county within our school system. I'm a parent guide, and I have been for the past five, six years, and we help parents navigate the school system and to get questions to their answers and to introduce them to the appropriate people. I am on, I'm the Chair of the Community Advisory Council. I truly believe that getting our community involved is extremely important, and feedback to the Board and information from the Board back to our schools. I also am on the ETM Council, and I've done that for the past, I think this is my third year, which is the education that's multicultural council. And I'm also, you know, I even took it one step further. My wife and I, we started Carroll Values Education to try to draw more parents, to get their feedback into our schools and to address the public's concerns. I attend board meetings regularly. Thank you.
Anyone like some rebuttal time? Okay. All right, next question. What are the specific challenges facing our local school board? Virginia, we'll begin with you.
One of our biggest challenges facing the school board is the budget and how low our funds are that we have to support our school system. And another large challenge that we're having now is the morale of our teachers. Because we have not been able to give our teachers raises in five years, we have a first-year teacher making the same thing that a five-year experience teacher makes, and that makes it very difficult for us to keep our qualified teachers. We're losing teachers every year. This year specifically, we lost over 200 employees. We are down even, we've cut central office, we've cut maintenance staff, we've rescheduled our buses, we're doing everything to save as much money as possible, but it's critical now. We have buildings that need roofs that we cannot replace, and that in the past, we had a formula where we would replace them. We don't have that anymore because we don't have the money to do all the things that we need to do, and this is becoming a critical, critical point with the school system. We need funding, and we need it badly. Our enrollment is going down, so the state has cut us, and it's just constantly, for the last couple of years, it's just been one cut after the other. Thank you.
Okay. And Bob, what are the specific challenges you believe that are facing the local school board?
Actually, I completely agree with Virginia, but I'll say to my own words, being active in our school system, I have seen the changes that have happened over the past few years. I've been active since my daughter started school, and she's in sixth grade, and I've seen the changes and I've seen the cuts, and it has been very dramatic. And yes, visiting the schools and talking with teachers and parents, morale is dropping, and we are losing our those experienced, quality educators to other counties, and it's a shame. I think our school system has done its wonderful job of trying not to affect the classroom, but I think it's coming to the point that it will. We definitely need funding. We need to retain the quality, experienced teachers that we have.
All right, very good. And Devon?
I think we need to, I do agree with Virginia and Bob, but we need to remember that our number-one goal is student success, and so we need to ask ourselves, how are we going to get there? Where are the problems preventing us from getting there? I definitely agree that lack of competitive salaries for our teachers is the biggest challenge facing, facing our school system right now. I also see we're lacking resource positions, and again, it's because of budget cuts, but we are underserving our gifted and talented pop student population, absolutely our special education population, and we don't have enough space and staffing for all the students who want to attend the Career and Tech Center or work on those programs. So I think that's an issue. I also feel like communication system-wide has been a problem. So I think those are some of the issues. Funding is a problem, but I feel like we really need to prioritize our number-one issue, which is teacher salary, and then put our resources towards that number-one priority. We do have declining student enrollment. It's affecting our funding from the state and from the county, so I think we need to focus on our number-one priority, which is increasing teacher salaries and do everything that we can to increase them.
All right, very good. Anybody need some rebuttal time or additional? Okay. We'll move on to the next question, and we'll, we'll address- And we'll, we'll address the elephant in the room. Understanding that the Common Core state standards are state law, how would you move forward with it in our Carroll County Public Schools? And let's see, Virginia started last time, so Bob, your turn.
Thank you. It is state law, and we have already been moving forward with it. It's being implemented over the past three years, and this year is the first year that it's fully implemented. And we will finally be taking our park assessments. I have my own issues with Common Core, specifically the, the park assessments, the length, the amount of time it'll take students to complete them. You know, it's truly been untested. So I do think that over the next years, couple of years, we need to make those adjustments. We need to get teachers professional development that they really deserve. And the last piece, which is the teacher evaluations, I have serious concerns with. Right now, Maryland, the state of Maryland has put a moratorium on it, and I hope they reevaluate everything. Thank you.
Okay. Devon, same question. Understanding that Common Core state standards are state law, how would you move forward with it in our local schools?
Common Core has been an interesting topic during this election. I feel like there's been this vision painted of three candidates absolutely opposed to Common Core and three candidates absolutely support it. So I just want to say, I don't support the Common Core because of the problems I've already mentioned. It's been too quickly implemented. We haven't supported our teachers with enough professional development. Our parents don't understand the changes. We need to address those issues. But like we've said before, it is state law. So we need to work within the system. We need to work with our legislators to slow down the pieces that are causing problems for our students and our staff. We need to address the problems that we can hear, like the communication with the parents and the professional development. And we need to move forward to make sure our kids are succeeding. And I will tell you, I, my son is in second grade. I have, there are some children that I have worked with for three years in a row now, and I do math facts with them. There are some kids who really have been struggling. And I was in there yesterday, and there are these two kids I'm thinking about. They get math now because of the Common Core way of doing things. So to me, the Common Core way is one tool in a toolbox for teachers. It doesn't necessarily work for everybody, and teachers are able to adapt. They know what to do with these kids. So it's one method and, thank you.
Anybody, anybody want to add anything to what you've already said?
Did you answer?
No.
All right.
Virginia hasn't answered.
Virginia, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Virginia. I didn't mean to shortchange you. Okay, so we're saying, understanding that Common Core state standards are state law, how would you move forward with it in our local schools?
Well, with Common Core being the state law, I understand that when it started, we had a timeline, they gave us a timeline. And the biggest problem is that timeline was way too short. We need time to gradually train all of our teachers, get everything in place, and then move forward. We're moving forward. And technically, Carroll County Public School has done a phenomenal job of moving forward. And one of the things I have to say about Carroll County Public School is when we get something that's new that we have to implement, we start right away. We check and see how we can do, what we can do with what we have. We need some time to push back with the testing, and we have filed for that, and we have gotten some of that, but we need more time. We need handheld devices. So many things that we need, and if we could just get the timeline pushed back a little bit so we can align our teachers, get the proper training, get the proper equipment, and have everything ready to go. That's critical in getting Common Core moving forward. With what we have, the money we have, the staff we have, we're doing a phenomenal job meeting what timeline we have.
All right, very good. Next question, and this is also related to Common Core. Please describe your understanding of the technology requirements associated with the Common Core state standards and the PARCC assessment. And Devon, we start with you on that one.
Okay. There is, the only technology associated with the Common Core is the use of computers for the park assessment. There has been some discussion in the community that there's going to be data mining devices. I've heard that there's going to be chairs, there's going to be retinal scanners, there's going to be all these devices that take physiological samples from our children. Our board of ed and our superintendent have said that's not true, but it stems from the report, it's called Promoting Grit, Tenacity, and Perseverance. It was put out by the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Educational Technology. And I called and I spoke with the director, his name is Richard Colada. This report was simply a literature review of what technology is available. It was never meant to be included as part of the Common Core. There was never any intention of being, being used in the public school system. And I asked him, and this is the director at the U.S. Department of Education, does the USDE plan to implement any of these tracking devices in our public schools now or in the future? And his quote was officially, absolutely not, and we don't recommend doing so. So we're using computers the same as we always have, and I don't believe any of these data mining devices are in any way associated with the Common Core.
All right. Virginia, same question. Do you, please describe your understanding of the technology requirements associated with Common Core and the PARCC assessment.
The park, my understanding, it's the park assessment is this collaborative, is the partnership of assessment of college and career readiness. And it's a combination of getting, we have to assess the principals, we have to assess the teachers, and we're assessing the kids. And we need devices, and we're not even sure which devices they are. And that, right there, is part of the problem. We don't know what kind of devices to use, and we're trying to come up with whether we can, we can use cell phones or what we can do for everyone to take this test. They have to take the test at the same time. And we need to come up with the devices so everyone can take the tests at the same time. And this will measure what the teachers are doing, if the teachers are being correct, the super, the principals are doing their job. It's a huge undertaking, and it's the best we can do. We're, we're learning to work with it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Bob, please describe your understanding of the technology requirements associated with Common Core and the PARCC assessment.
From my understanding, for the park assessments, it is no longer paper-based like the past assessments, so that we are going to need devices, which are typically handheld or computer devices. As Virginia just stated, we don't know exactly what the requirements are yet. But it's simply a device that a child would be able to use to take the test. Whether it's, you know, fill in the blank, write the words, check off this, it's a simple device. Nothing to measure, you know, or data mine the child's reaction to test-taking. I have heard the same rhetoric that Devon has just discussed. And actually, I appreciate that she made that phone call. But I do believe that is just rhetoric. But, so from my understanding, it's a simple device, whether it's a tablet, a computer or such, that a child can take the test on. And it'll allow the school system to get the data much faster than a paper version. Thank you.
All right, very good. Anybody need rebuttal time or add anything?
I'd like to add something, if you don't mind.
Sure.
In this school system, you, you have to have a tool of measuring. And we've had the MSAs, and the PA, RCC is going to take the place of the MSA. It's just a way of measuring your, your students and, and your teachers and your principal. That's simply what it is. Thank you.
All right. Next question, and, and now we're going to deal with some questions that were submitted online. And I think we're starting, Virginia, I think you'll have the first response on this one. Will you push the new commissioners, the new county commissioners, to eliminate the Education Opportunity Fund and put that money back in the public school budget?
Yes, I would. With what we're going through with the school system, for the commissioners to give that money to private schools and homeschool, I, it was atrocious. I, it was really like a slap in the face because we're cutting and we're doing without and we're doing without. And I strongly believe we're going to fight to stop, ask commissioners not to give that money.
Okay. Bob, same question. Will you push the new county commissioners to eliminate the Education Opportunity Fund and put that money back in the public school budget?
The Education Opportunity Fund, you know, was an action done by our commissioners. It really had nothing to do with our Board of Education, and they use surplus funds, their surplus funds. Yes, I do believe it's a slap in the face that as our school system's funding is cut, they start another social program that benefits few. I, I do believe that this will be the last year of it, and as our new commissioners are seated, that that will be stopped. Thank you.
Okay. And Devon, same question. Will you push the new commissioners to eliminate the Education Opportunity Fund and put that money back in the general public school budget?
I think that I will push the commissioners to provide resources for our school system, and it's up to the Board of Commissioners how they do that. Like it's been said, the Education Opportunities Fund does not fall under the purview of the Board of Education. I'm, I'm hopeful that we are going to elect commissioners that really do support public education and that they will decide to, to provide more resources to our education system. But, so my personal opinion about the Education Opportunities Fund is I, I, I'm not in favor of it. I believe that Doug Howard suggested, if they were going to do something like that, to have the library's system be in charge of it, where they would be ordering books or resources, and then those, those materials would stay in the county and could be used by everyone. You know, the report that just came out said a ridiculous percentage of the Education Opportunities Fund was going to pay for parents to transport their kids to private school. I don't believe that that's a wise use of our county tax dollars. So, but I think my focus is going to be working with the commissioners to support public education.
All right, very good. Anybody want to add anything? Okay. Next question. In recent years, school funding has been increasingly tied to high-stakes testing. This has caused a lot of pressure on school districts and administrators to emphasize particular subjects and allow other untested subjects to fall to the fringes. The arts in particular thrive or flounder depending on the decisions of the principal in each school. What do you see as the Board of Education's role with regard to the arts? Bob?
Very good question. You know, visiting schools and talking to parents, it is, it's upsetting to see that arts programs are cut because I see a lot of value with that. I don't want to say that the Board of Education should enforce, you know, what is happening in each individual school, because every school is unique. And I think that the best person to see that would be the administration. I would like to see more funding go to the arts. I feel it's just as valuable as some of the other programs that we have, some of the academic programs, in fact. But I think that we should voice a stronger set of guidelines to our principals to take a second look at it and do appreciate it a little bit more.
All right. Devon, same question.
I am so thankful that this question was asked because, you know, we've, we've been talking about Common Core, we've been talking about funding, and to me, this is a really important issue, and I don't think it's been brought up at all during the campaign. I believe that kids need a well-rounded learning experience, and just doing reading and writing and math so that they can pass high-stakes assessments is not good enough for our kids. So arts are incredibly important in providing, in producing successful, well-rounded students. I do know that we do have some minimum art standards. At the elementary school, there are standards for art and music, and then band and chorus are voluntary at the fourth and fifth grade. So yes, I, I would absolutely support policies that would produce more art, fine art standards. I think also there's other things we can do, like we can work with school counselors so that you're not putting art classes against, say, the only AP English class, so that kids aren't having to choose between those two things. There's this great program called Young Audiences, and they come in for assemblies and they do eight-week residency programs, and that's paid for by the PTA. That doesn't have to come out of the school system budget. So I do think there are things that we can do that aren't going to cost money for our school system, but that will really increase the arts that are available to our students.
And Virginia, same question.
I, I think the arts are critical in educating a child because sometime, just the fact that that child knows that they can do the arts is one reason to come to school. But the truth of the matter is, with the budget the way it is, and the fact that in Carroll County, our minority rate is so low that there are grants, thousands of grants that you could apply for, but we can't get them because our minority rate is so low. And we miss sometime over millions of dollars a year because of that. And if we could get some type of grants that would help us promote this program, that would be phenomenal. But it, I think this is really a critical part, and the fact that we have lost so much money in the last couple of years, we are now having people to pay for the uniforms. We have, the school system is paying for the kids who can't afford it. We're doing everything we possibly can do to see that this is, these needs are being met. Thank you.
This next question is from the audience. Understanding that you are not trained administrators, teachers, or educators, how would you establish a working relationship with the superintendent? And would your role be hands-on or an advisory role? Let's see, Devon, you lead this one off.
I think I already have a strong relationship with the superintendent and have for years. I mean, when I have questions about our school system, I go to the people who know what's going on. So from the very beginning, I remember sending an email to Mr. Guthrie, I was upset about something. It's been a lot of things, so I don't even know what it was, but, and he responded back to me. So I meet with our superintendent regularly, I meet with our administrators and other members of the cabinet regularly. I have, you know, one thing that I, I really find is valuable is to collect all the information before making decisions. And because of those, because I'm not a trained educator, I go to the experts. I do that with, I go to the commissioners when I have questions about our budget. So I think I'm going to be hands-on, not in a micromanaging kind of way, but just because I think it's important to be in our school system and to really see what's going on, to talk to the administrators so that they can express their concerns, to talk with teachers and parents. So I will be hands-on, but I hope I won't be any more meddlesome than I've been in the past two years. Thank you.
All right, Virginia, same question. How would you establish a, a relationship with a superintendent, and would it be a hands-on or an advisory one?
I, I think it's kind of both. It's hand-on and advisory, because to work with the superintendent, you really, you really have to have a good relationship. And like Devon, I found Mr. Guthrie to be quite open. And matter of fact, I worked with him before- with him before he became superintendent, and I would go to him and ask him questions. And he's somebody that's quite approachable and open to suggestions, and I know many times I'll read an article or see a film, and I can give it to him and ask him to look through it through my eyes. So, I think it's, that's a part of the communication piece when you're working with the, with the school system. It needs to be open and honest conversation, and I have great respect for the school system and the people that work there, and it's a collaboration. You've got to work together, and you can't be an individual hand. You have to be a team. And if you're going to be on the Board of Education, you really have to be a team, because there's five of you, and sometime, your thinking may be changed a little bit. But it's just crucial that we have a great relationship with our superintendent.
All right. And Bob, would you establish, in terms of your working relationship with the superintendent, a hands-on or an advisory?
I think both, equally both. I will say that because I'm a parent that's involved in our school system, I have built a wonderful relationship with Mr. Guthrie. He has answered every question. He is very approachable, that I can pick up the phone, and I know that I can either get a hold of him, or he's going to call me right back at his convenience as quick as possible. I've even sent him an email at 2:00 in the morning because I had a thought, and get a reply immediately. I feel that he does strive to hear feedback from our community, and I think that working on the board, it will just be a continuously good relationship. I completely agree with Virginia. That is extremely important, is that open communication between the five board members and our superintendent, and I look forward to working with him. Thank you.
All right.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
I don't want, I don't want the fact that I have a good respectful relationship with Mr. Guthrie to make anyone think that I'm afraid to ask tough questions of him. I mean, there have been plenty of issues on which we have not agreed, and we have had respectful disagreements and debates over, and I certainly believe that as a Board of Education member, that's my job, you know? My job is not to go along with everything that he says, but to get information and collect public feedback, and so I have a good working relationship. I expect that will continue, and I expect that we're still going to have disagreements, too.
All right. Very good. And another question from the audience, and I'm actually going to put two together here because they, they both deal with the same topic. Carroll County teachers have not had a raise in excess of five years, and as a result, this has led to the departure of many tenured teachers to neighboring counties. In fact, hourly employees who've been in the Carroll County system for upwards of 15 years or more make the same amount, $10.70 per hour, as a new hourly employee. What specifically will you do to assure teachers receive a competitive salary and stop the drain of our education talent? Virginia, you get the first response.
Okay. We're hoping that with this election, that we'll have a set of commissioners that we could really work with and get our teachers to a competitive salary, because it is really crucial. Howard County loves us, because we train our teachers, and then they go to Howard County. They can make from $10,000 to $20,000 more a year to take a half an hour ride. And we're working on it, we're sitting down, we're having a meeting soon, that we're going to try to come up with a way that we can get our teachers more money. But it truly depends on whether our commissioners find that it's necessary, that they're going to give us the money to help fund the teachers, and we're going to try to work with them and push them as hard as we possibly can, because we cannot afford to lose any more of our teachers. It's crucial. Our kids are what we care about. We need good teachers, and we're losing them. Thank you.
Bob?
As everybody knows, the Board of Education does not have the taxing authority, so we're very dependent on our commissioners and our state. I am also very hopeful that we elect good commissioners this term, but also, I think it's most important that our Board of Education works closely with our commissioners, expresses our funding needs, but also addresses our delegation to do the same. I mean, we lost most of our money from the state, but I think this relationship that we build between our delegation and our commissioners and our Board of Education, I think it is crucial to obtain the funding that we truly need. Like I've told you before, the Board of Education, our school system has made cuts over the past four, five years, and I think it's really down to the point that they can cut no longer, and we are losing quality, experienced educators to other counties, and that is crucial. Thank you.
Devin?
Well, I think we all agree that our number-one priority for our school system is providing competitive salaries for our teachers. I've, I said at the last forum, and I've been saying, I think that we should look into providing retirement incentive packages for our teachers. We're losing, most of the teachers that we're losing are mid-career teachers, so we have a larger proportion of senior teachers, and I recognize they are extremely valuable, they have a lot of experience, but I think it would be worth looking into offering them retirement incentive packages and then using that, those, the savings to either bump up our starting salary or put it back into the teacher salaries that are staying here. It's not going to address the entire problem, but it is going to show that our school system really does prioritize giving our teachers competitive salaries. It will show our commissioners that we are being fiscally responsible and prioritizing our dollars, and, and it will put a little more money in our teachers' pockets.
Okay. Anybody want to add anything to what you said before? Okay. And we have this question. It is impossible to ignore the lack of discipline in regard to poor conduct by teachers. What is your plan for fighting against pushing unprofessionalism under the rug? And Bob, you get to respond first to this.
I don't understand the question. Could you repeat that one more time?
All right. I'm going to try. It's impossible to ignore lack of discipline given in regard to poor conduct by teachers. What is your plan for fighting against pushing unprofessionalism under the rug?
Well, I have not witnessed any of this stuff, but I mean, each case needs to be evaluated case by case, you know? There are unique circumstances. We, I'm sure our Board of Education will not tolerate unprofessionalism. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can you say that one more time?
Devin, will you read it again?
Yeah.
It's impossible to ignore the lack of discipline given in regard to poor conduct by teachers. What is your plan for fighting against pushing unprofessionalism under the rug?
I'm not really sure how to answer that, because I just think our teachers are such dedicated, innovative professionals, and I, this is the first that I've heard of this problem. So, I guess if this is a problem, we need to have public feedback from, submitted to the Board of Education. I would imagine that most situations are firstly handled by our administrators, who I also have great respect for, and I have met many of them, and I believe that they know what they're doing. So, I guess I would need more information, because like Bob, I've never heard of this, and I believe that we have competent administrators who would be able to address the problem. But if it's a problem, you know, we can, there's a place to submit public feedback, there's place, a way to submit anonymous feedback, and we would have to look into that situation when more information was available.
Okay. And Virginia, shall I read it again?
It's still.
I've been on the board for four years, and in my experience in being on the board, if there is some unprofessionalism that's going on, we handle it very swiftly. We do, if we find that a teacher or someone is lacking in a certain area, we have mentors that we send in or to help them out, and I know with our new teachers, we, each one of them, we pair them with mentors, and our new teachers, we're reaching out to so we can maintain them. And if there's any really unprofessionalism going on, we pretty much deal with that very swiftly, and that's taken care of. I, in my years, even in things that you hear out, I have not heard any, anything like that, never.
All right. Very good. Good job with a tricky question.
No, we answered it.
Next audience question, and let's see, Devin, you get to respond first. Do you believe that supervisors should have family members working under them?
Wow. I don't, I can tell you that I don't know the policy about that, so I would have to look into that policy, what our current policy is, and if there's specific instances where there's problems. You know, you'd like to think that our supervisors are professional enough that they would be able to have family members under them if, you know, if we have a supervisor of elementary education, or the director of elementary education, she has all the teachers at the elementary school level under her. So, I think I would need to look into that policy and see if we're having issues before I could form an opinion on that.
Okay. Virginia, do you believe that supervisors should have family members working under them?
I really think it depends on the job. If you're a supervisor and you have a family member that's an expert in something that we need, I don't, I don't see where, I really don't see where it's a problem. But I cannot think of any incident that I know about that that has happened, but if you're an expert and we need an expert, and you're the most qualified person to do the job that they need, I don't see where there's a problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Bob, again, the question, do you believe that supervisors should have family members working under them?
I agree with Virginia. It really needs to be viewed on a case-by-case basis. If there's direct supervisory oversight of that employee, that might be questionable. The policy, I would really have to look at the policy and really what the job function would be.
Okay. All right. Here's, here's another interesting question. And let's see, Virginia, you get to respond first to this one. To your knowledge, are there any empty rooms at Manchester Valley High School?
Not only are there empty rooms at Manchester Valley, at any time of day, there may be an empty room in every school, because some of the schools use rooms for different things. You know, some, every, when people go to lunch, there's empty rooms. There's empty rooms, could be at any time. Matter of fact, I went to Oklahoma, I was touring Oklahoma. I went, there was five empty rooms. Just because a room is empty doesn't mean that it's not being used, because you use the rooms for different things. If you, you know, so you, you can't, you can't go by that. Thank you.
All right. Bob, to your knowledge, are there any empty rooms at Manchester Valley High School?
Well, I'll be honest with you, I did not get the full tour when I was there, but I agree with Virginia. I have visited many, many schools, and at different times of the day, there are rooms that are empty, but it's obvious that these rooms are being utilized. No, I wish I did have a little bit more knowledge. I just did not get the full tour. Wish I did. Thank you.
All right. And Devin, lastly, are you aware if there are any empty rooms at Manchester Valley High School?
Yes, in every school I've been in, there's been empty rooms. Kids go to specials, kids go to lunch, there are empty rooms, but what this question is asking about is our declining enrollment and utilization. So, we know that Manchester Valley and North Carroll High School both have low utilization numbers, and we do need to address this. I mean, the, the schools there are running inefficiently. I'm not suggesting that they both need to be closed, that's not what I'm saying, but I do think we're getting to a point where we need to balance enrollments, we need to probably look at redistricting, and, you know, our, our enrollments are expected, our student population is expected to decline for the next several years, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions. So, I mean, that, that's one of the reasons why it's so important to elect Board of Ed members who understand what's happening in our school system, who are out in our school systems, who understand how closing a school or redistricting is going to affect the community. So, there you go. Thank you.
Anyone want to add anything? Virginia?
Yes. Let's talk about this. Manchester Valley is at 61% capacity. North Carroll is at 65. If you put all of them in one school, that's 125%, so you're overcrowded. So, we, there is things that we're looking at where we could possibly redistrict and fill the school, because in South Carroll, we're full. Liberty High School is overcrowded. We've got elementary schools now that's overcrowded, because that part of the county is, has more population, where in North Carroll, the population is smaller, but we can do some redistricting. And the problem with that, as soon as we say we're going to redistrict, everybody's going to jump up. But we have three schools that we need to do something about, and what we're thinking about doing, or we, we did a survey, and what we want to do is build another school, and then we redistrict. We make it a one-time thing of redistricting. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to add anything? Okay, last two questions, and then we'll, we'll go to summations. Describe one issue, let's see, this is going to be, Virginia, you get to start with this. Describe one issue affecting the Carroll County Public Schools that's important to you that hasn't been asked tonight.
That hasn't been asked.
Is there an issue that we haven't talked about that's very important to you about the schools that you'd like to mention?
I would. We hear a lot about Manchester Valley and how we built Manchester Valley, and technically, Carroll County School cannot just build a school. We get a lot of blame for building that, and we didn't do that. When they built Manchester Valley, there was, it was the commissioners who wanted to build the school, and now, everybody wants to blame the school system, because they, it has to come out of their budget. We did not choose to do this. This is a commissioner-driven school that they built, and it was needed. But at that time, our enrollment was moving up. We were building schools, right after we built a school, then we had portables. And I remember in my neighborhood, they built Linton Elementary, and as soon as they built it, it was four portables out there, and we were growing. And then all of a sudden, our enrollment started to go down, and that's what's been happening. It's going down. We lose about 200 kids a year, and it's not from one section of the county, it's from every school. We need, we use 10 out of this one, 10 out of that one, 10 out of that one, and, and that's what's been going on. Thank you.
Okay. Bob, describe an issue affecting the Carroll County Public Schools that's important to you and we haven't asked a question about it tonight.
Definitely early intervention, special education. These are, these programs, I think, are being underserved, and mainly, it really does not get into the public eye that much, which is concerning. You know, a few years ago, that, you know, we were rated in the paper to have one of the, the best early intervention programs, and then because of our funding cuts, we lost funding to them, and it's, it's disheartening. I really think that we need to pay a little bit more attention to these programs. think that we need to pay a little bit more attention to these programs.
Okay. And Devin, describe an issue affecting the Carroll County Public Schools that's important to you and perhaps has not been asked or mentioned tonight.
Well, Bob just stole my answer. My answer was definitely special education. Of all the parents that I have heard from during this campaign, I have heard from more parents with kids in the special education program who feel like their kids are really not getting the services that they need. I know that our school system is providing them everything required by law. And because of budget restrictions, we can't do more. But we are really, we are really underserving these, these kids. You know, we, our biggest achievement gap is between our general population and our special education population. Our teachers, our special education teachers, I mean, that's a hard job anyways with a high turnover. But we have such a high turnover rate. The number of teachers that declined special education positions in this county drastically went up this year. They are overworked. We don't have, they don't have caseload limits. They are bogged down with paperwork and IEP meetings. So, you know, when we talk about, we need to move forward with improving academic success, I feel like this is an area where we really could do better by our kids.
All right. And anything else you want to add something, Virginia?
Uh, Bob just said about early childhood. And I have to tell you, in 19, I think it was nine, 2007, Carroll County was at 62% for early childhood. That was our percentage. And this, now, in 2013, we were at 91%. The job that we're doing is at 91%, which is the highest in the state of Maryland. And the average for the state of Maryland is 81%. So with our early childhood, we're doing a phenomenal job. We really are. Just wanted to correct that.
Good, good. All right, last question before the summation. And Bob, you're going to be responding first.
Okay.
"In your opinion," and this is a chance for everyone to toot their own horn a bit. "In your opinion, what qualities, skills, and unique experience do you bring to the school board?"
Good question. Being involved in our education over the, you know, past several years, I really feel I have an understanding of the issues. Sitting on the various committees, discussing these issues with our community, our teachers, I feel that I have a lot to bring to the table. You know, for example, being on these committees, I've learned that I have to work with people, not five, but sometimes 40 people. That, you know, there is not one person that makes that decision. We make those decisions as a group. You know, the benefit of talking to the teachers is I get to hear their concerns, what their priorities are. You know, which gives me a deep understanding. And listen to the parents' concerns. You know, I feel that being involved in our communities and our school system is crucial for running for this position. Thank you.
All right, very good. Devin, "In your opinion, what unique qualities, skills, or experience do you feel you bring to the school board?"
I too think my involvement in our school system is going to be very beneficial in making decisions. I feel like I'm very good at building relationships. I've reached out, I have good, strong relationships with most of our commissioners, with central office staff. I'm really, I have a master's degree in science, so I think through problems very systematically. I like to gather a lot of information, look at all sides of an issue before making a decision. I'm a problem solver. But I think, and anyone who knows me, knows this about me, I think my best quality that is going to make me a strong Board of Education member is my passion for our school system. I mean, I just get so excited. My husband will tell you, every time I come home from a school visit, I'm just jumping up and down because I love our school so much. And I will do everything that I can to fight for our kids and our teachers. Thank you.
All right. Virginia, "What qualities, skills, and unique experience do you feel that you bring to the school board?"
I think the quality that I bring is that I've worked in the community for a lot of years. And one of the things, I understand the relationship between the Department of Social Service and the school system. I understand that you can, a child can go home from school and be set out on the street. I understand how they feel. And I understand how the principals feel about their schools. That's why I go to the schools. And these teachers work so hard and they do programs. And a lot of time, our administrations, they're, they're busy, they're doing things. And as a board member, when I know you have a program, I can go out to your program so I can be a part of what you're doing and understand what you're doing. And I can share with, with other people what you're doing. I can tell this person what a phenomenal job you're doing at your school and that you have food pantry. And that 22 kids, schools have food pantries and others don't. Just getting the message out, we have, in our Career intact, we have a bio, a program that only three high schools in the whole country have. And a lot of people don't know about all the things that we're doing and how good the school system works. It is not without its issues. But they're constantly working on it. It's constantly changing. And I think I understand that. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, now each of the candidates is going to have a minute and a half to do a summary. And Devin, we'll start with you.
Again, I would like to thank everyone who's here tonight and our sponsors. I also must note, because it is still the question that I'm most asked, that Commissioner Rothschild and I are not related. When I decided to run for this office 18 months ago, I honestly had no idea how much time I would have to dedicate to my campaign. I have spent an unbelievable number of nights away from my husband and children. I have had friends, Katie, Angela, Rob, Erin, and Chris, spent countless days away from their families on my behalf. And there are plenty other supporters of mine who have donated many hours to my campaign. And I will tell you that it has not been easy to do. However, whenever I have a day where I wonder if I'm going to make it to November 4th, I schedule a school visit, as I mentioned. And every time, every single time, I come home with a renewed desire to fight for our school system. Because when I am in the schools, I see what this election is really about. It's about supporting our students and the educators that stand before them every day. It's about doing everything that we can do to make sure our students are given the opportunities they need to succeed in life. So that's what you'll get from me, someone who's willing to fight for what is best for our students, who's involved in our school system, who seeks out and values community input, and who isn't afraid to ask tough questions. As a board member, I will make the success of each and every student my ultimate goal. Please cast your vote for me, Devin Rothschild, in the upcoming elections so that I may be a voice for every student in the community. Thank you.
Okay. And Virginia, your summary?
My commitment is to support every effort to ensure that our students continue to achieve through a rigorous, clearly articulated, and aligned instructional program, intimate, implemented in an atmosphere of trust, mutual respect, and safety. This is my goal for your children, this is for the teachers, this is for our school system. Because our school system is for the future. We're building a better future for our kids because when they achieve, we achieve. I care about the school system. I have been impressed with the people that I've met. I've been impressed with what they've done, with what they have, how they work together, and how dedicated the school system is to making your kids achieve. That's what I care about. I see every child as my child. And like I said to my own kids, if I don't educate you, I have failed you. And I don't plan to fail because you are all I have. And that's why I'm on the school board. And that's why I ask for your support. Because we really need to educate our kids. It is crucial that we educate our kids. Thank you.
And Bob, your final remarks?
Well, in summary, the first thing I'd like to say is I have to thank my children who are sitting in the back and have sat through this whole forum well behaved. Running for the Board of Education has taken a big toll on my family. I'm here because I'm a parent, a concerned parent. I'm not a politician. And as a parent, I'm in, I'm active in Carroll County Public Schools in just the way, about every way I can be. You know, running for the Board of Education, like I've said before, is really the next logical step in what I've been doing. This race isn't about Democrats, it's not about Republicans, liberals, or conservatives. You know, this race is about all the stakeholders of our quality education system. It's about our students, our families, and our communities. We aren't making widgets or producing a product, we're educating students in a safe environment. And we're all seeking what is best for our children in our county. Thank you.
Thank you all. I'd like to thank the candidates for joining us this evening and our audience for your participation. Thank you so much. A special thanks to Mr. Bill Butts for serving as moderator, and to the Carroll County Times, WTR 1470 AM, and the Hometown Observer for helping to publicize the forums. Tonight's Board of Education forum will be rebroadcast on Cable Channel 19 starting tomorrow, Thursday, October 23rd, at 5:00 PM. At that time, the program will also be available for viewing on the Community Media Center's website at www.carrillmediacenter.org. WTR 1470 AM will rebroadcast the program on Sunday, November 2nd, at 10:00 AM. So thank you, everybody, and good night.